Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our formal session. And we're going to call this the order, and I will be doing the invocation tonight. If we could all please rise. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of our great city. And please give us the patience to listen, to wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And if we may have a moment of silence to those in our great country who have given the ultimate sacrifice, and then also in memory of the victims of 531. Thank you, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
All are present. Could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
No motion.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
The vote is open.
Ready.
Councilmember Henley, thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, at this point in time, we have a motion to approve the informal and formal session minutes of March 3, 21, 2023, and the formal session of March 28, 2023.
No motion.
Okay, motion and a second.
That included the change that I found, okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this point, we'll move right to our consent agenda, but prior to, I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the items that are being considered by the council at the time you are called. And for the items placed on the consent agenda, we have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. And again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that we have, that they have signed to address. And finally, I call upon all the speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that the viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do that for us, to strive for civility and respect. And Madam Clerk, before we call up the first speaker, I think we're privileged, honored, to have Troop 493 here, so would you please all come up? Come on up and say hello, folks. The future of our great nation, right here. Boy, what an honor to be among you, and I just wanted to thank scout leaders. Please come up and say a little bit about your troop, where you're from, and, yeah. And, boy, I love their, you know, stuff. They got, came from Poseidon right now.
Hey, thank you so much for letting us join you guys tonight. We're Troop 493, North Great Neck area, out of White Cliff Presbyterian Church. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, honored to be here. And to commemorate your coming, we'd like to give you a little gift, and it's a token of our 60th anniversary, and we have one for each of you. So if you can just, you know, come on up. There we go. Welcome. Welcome. Hey, how's it going? Welcome. Welcome. There you go. Welcome. And just go ahead and move forward, so they can move down a little bit. There we go. Oh, yeah, that's yours. Okay, there we go. There you go. Here you go. Here we go. Here we go. And also for the scout leaders, because thank you for all you do. Thank you. Okay, it's always a pleasure to honor those that are to the future. Okay, Madam Clerk, at this point, do we have any speaker on all items?
Barbara Messner has signed up on all items, however, she, I do not see her, so at this point, no, sir.
Okay, at this point, Madam Vice President, if we can, Vice, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It was a very long afternoon. My ADHD is going.
Okay, under ordinance and resolutions, number one, the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 21-353 and 21-354 regarding the residential parking permit, RPP, program requested by Councilmembers Berluci, Remick, Schulman, and Taylor. Number three, the resolution to revise the public briefing cadence regarding flood prevention bond referendum oversight board requested by the Flood Prevention Bond Reference, referendum Oversight Board, with Mrs. Henley voting no and Mr. Taylor voting no. Number four is the ordinance to adopt the City of Virginia Beach's electric vehicle charging plan, rate assist city efforts to obtain grants and federal funding for electric vehicle charging stations. Number five has been pulled. Number six, the ordinance to accept and appropriate $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022/23 Human Services Operating Budget Refunding for the Systems Transformation Excellence and Performance Step VA Program. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $22,500 from the Virginia Department of Social Services to the FY 2022/23 Human Services Operating Budget Ray Adult Protective Services Department. Number eight is the ordinance to transfer $225,416 from the General Fund Vacancy Savings to the FY 2022/23 Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, Ray, to meet the city's required contributions to the local government agreement.
And I open a public hearing on planning?
Number two, the Kempsvillege 2 LLC for modification of conditions to a conditional use permit, ray revised site layout and allow up to 186 multifamily units resulting in a density of 18.6 units per acre at the intersection of Oak, Mears Crescent, and Princess Anne Road, District 3. Number three, ASXM LLC for conditional use permit, ray short-term rentals at 180 Baltic Avenue, District 6. Number four is Prodan Management Group LLC for conditional use permit, ray short-term rentals at 503 18th Street, District 6. Number five, DUIVU Davisville Properties LLC for conditional use permit, ray tattoo parlors at 737 First Colonia Road, Unit 2112, District 6. Number six, Elizabeth Darling Procopas John Demollis Family LLC for conditional use permit, ray tattoo parlor at 1776 Laskin Road, Suite 104, District 6. Number seven, Edith J. Hastingsen Si Lynn Haven Fund LLC for conditional use permit, ray tattoo parlor at 2077 Lynn Haven Parkway, Suite 103, District 7. Number eight is Onan Kahoo Sam Cape Henry Plaza LLC for conditional use permit for tattoo parlor at 2817 Shore Drive, Suite 112, District 8. And number nine, ordinance to amend City Zoning Ordinance, CZO, Section 104, ray use of several penalties.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah, let's move to approve.
Okay, any other discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Councilmember Henley and Councilmember Taylor's nay vote on item number, ordinance number three.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, ordinance to extend the sunset date to April 5, 2026, ray residential parking permit in the historic Cavalier Shores neighborhood, requested by Councilmembers Berluci, Remick, Schulman, and Taylor.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Billy Allman.
Okay.
Mr. Allman, Ms. Messner's first, thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
You're well aware that I was here. You could have allowed me to speak on consent agenda. Okay, which one is this, since you, you've already taken 20 seconds? I asked which one this is.
Item two.
Item two, residential parking. Okay, there is no parking. It's discrimination for you to have parking for select groups, the Cavalier, and you're taking away all the parking. It was two, almost 200 pages just for the residential parking that you're putting through. Like I said, it's discrimination. You use short-term rentals, and you sell our parking lots to private people and take it away from us. There's a conflict with the people that sell short-term rentals. You know who you are. Like I said, it's unreal, and your documents are not legit. This one, Chris Taylor, Jennifer Rouse, Sabrina Wooton. Wooton's the only one that signed this. There's no witnesses, no notaries, nothing you do.
Please stick to the item at hand, Ms. Messner. Thank you.
It affects the items at hand. Yeah, extending the date for historic Cavalier neighborhoods. You have specific neighborhoods. The North End people go along with the Cavalier scam, and the ones who did this, they took over for Branch, who had conflicts, and, you know, I've had like three different people that represented me, and I sent you a letter because, right now, Ms. Wilson and the mayor are the only ones that are my reps. Yeah, the expenses that you're taking to create nothing but parking, electric parking...
Thank you very much.
And the next speaker is Billy Allman. After Mr. Allman is Robert Woodard.
Hey, welcome, Billy.
Good evening. Billy Allman, North Virginia Beach Civic League Board Member. I rarely come down here, and this is really difficult to stand up and disagree with folks that I grew up with and neighbors that I do care about, but we are the neighborhood the 44 blocks north of Cavalier Shores with a fair number of meaningful and resourceful folks as well, and we've been around since the 20s. The Civic League has always opposed this special parking program back when it was started. We do believe that they should be in the RPP program as it was just voted on. Over time, this specialized neighborhood restricted parking has simply just pushed the parking north to 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, 50th. I would ride to work in the morning and watch a construction worker skateboarding from 50th Street down to the Embassy Suites to go to work. The Cavalier Shores program, genesis of that was about the construction traffic. The construction is over. Simply put, we feel it should be in the RPP program, just like every other resort neighborhood that lives next to the resort. Distinguishing them as different and special is inequitable, and not fear the other citizens of our city who live in Centerville, Bayside, Ocean Park, Kempsville. To not allow the public to come park, to go to the beach for the day, and make them move their car every four hours, to me, is just not about equity, which is something we've been trying to work on for quite some time. Remember Cavalier Shores was platted in the 20s? They have rear alleys and parking in the rear of their homes. Those who don't chose to change that into a vegetable garden or take their garage and turn it into a studio. The parking code, all our districts require 29 by 18 parking spaces on-site, suggests that we require them to build 29 by 18 parking spaces on-site before you afford the minimum to afford relief. That's just the code, and that's applicable to everywhere in the city. Properties north of 45th don't have the option. We have to park on-site. We don't claim the street to be able to park in it. That's just the best we can do. We've sent a couple options as a compromise. One was to extend the program through June 20, so we could sit down and work this out and look at the data for April and May, go through something in the water as well as the Memorial Day weekend. We also thought about doing the RPP program as a pilot, like we do so many places down at the resort for a year, and see what comes from that. This was presented to Cavalier Shores yesterday, and they did not want to go with the compromise. They said that they had the votes, and so not taking the proper time to research and study the current parking data without construction traffic suggests that this is a politically-driven decision and not one based on the facts. Should you choose to pass this, it may end up replicating itself other places in the city where people have the same situation.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Woodard. After Mr. Woodard is Steve Gibson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and members of City Council. I'm here to speak for more than 90% of the members of the historic Cavalier Shores Civic League who have signed a petition asking for an extension of the current parking program affecting residents of our neighborhood. This program is designed by city staff to ameliorate the impact of our neighborhood, on our neighborhood, of the redevelopment of the Cavalier Resort Complex adjourning our streets and houses. Our request is summarized in the letter from our president, Bernice Pope, which was in your Friday package. I won't repeat the details of that letter here, but Mrs. Pope is here tonight, and I are glad to answer any questions that you may have. In summary, there is a four-hour permitted parking program in place in our neighborhood that has been effective, equitable, and successful throughout its four-year history in providing residents of our historic neighborhood reasonable access to much-needed on-street parking without unduly limiting parking for beachgoers and visitors to the Cavalier Resort Complex. As you know, the resort complex is now complete, and it and we faced its first full post-pandemic warm-weather season. The Cavalier Complex has been transformed from one with a great location but only two aging and commercially failing hotels to one with a stunning array of high-end homes known as the Cavalier Residences and three impressive hotels, each with a recognized national brand or flag, and together offering more than 500 guest rooms and more than 25,000 square feet of event space, multiple restaurants, plus a spa and a bourbon distillery. It has been reported that it takes 900 employees to staff the operations of the Cavalier Complex. In the absence of an extension of the existing parking program, we fear that many, if not most, of those employees will utilize the limited on-street parking spaces in our neighborhood day and night, as well as residents of the Cavalier Residences, who have limited free on-site parking available to them and their guests. The residents of Cavalier Shores have greatly appreciated the existence of the current parking program. We believe that it has benefited all Virginia Beach residents and visitors who come to our area. We greatly appreciate the extension of the program, and we have brought along some folks from the neighborhood just to show the support and appreciation of you all giving us this program over the last four years. Do you all want to stand from our neighborhood?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Steve Gibson.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Skip Gibson. I'm a member of the North Virginia Beach Civic League. I'm the vice president. This is a difficult position, not only for council but for all of the residents at the North End. Parking is never easy. The Civic, the North Virginia Beach Civic League asks for you to oppose this position and put the, move this to the RPP program, just like you would any other neighborhood. As the previous speaker just noted, he has an expectation that there'll be 900, potentially 900 employees parking there, but it's a projection. There's no data, there's no studies, there's no information. We recommend that you do what the city does best. Take a moment, call timeout, study the issue, don't create a new program. We think that this issue should be part of RPP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
We have a second. Okay, any discussion? Ms. Henley?
Yes, I have a question. This, the wording has not been changed since the previous times when we adopted this as a temporary, and it says, a temporary pilot program in order to mitigate traffic going on the ongoing construction project, but is it not correct that the construction is complete? So if, and as our transmittal letter indicated, it seems that we are now addressing the traffic that is potential because of the presence of the hotels and the restaurants and so forth. So it would seem to me that those uses were required to provide a certain amount of parking places, and somebody must have fallen short if they didn't require those uses to provide the parking places that they required. I'm thinking the circumstances have changed since we did these originally and what the situation is now, and so I'm thinking that it's not even legitimate, because it says that this is temporary during the ongoing construction project.
Okay, Mr. Stiles?
That Section 3D1 could certainly be deleted or reworded.
Okay.
If the maker of the motion wishes to...
Worth, are you willing to modify that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
To what?
I think it would just say reserved. I don't think you have to have that section.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, in that case, if it's because of the existing uses, whose employees and so forth may use it, then that means that it's the same kind of situation that we have in the part of the city that has this existing residential parking permit program. So I don't, this one is very restrictive to only four hours, and so if the situation is the same as it is in this area that has the residential parking permit program, I believe it should be the same as that. I don't think it should be more restrictive. You know, we, we kind of do things, and we give people their word, and we gave our, the North Virginia Beach people the word that, okay, this is going to be temporary, just during construction, but if that's passed, then I think we need to really look at, at what should be the use, and I kind of agree that we need to see just how many employees and so forth are going to be there and have the program that addresses that. I think an extension of a few months might very well be certainly acceptable to do that, but I just don't think that this, what was to be the very, very restricted four hours only, no matter when, of during the construction, is just not what we have as a situation there now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Worth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Henley. Ladies and gentlemen, so the genesis of this request is for four hours maximum parking. This community is impacted by the $430 million Cavalier Resort. It's a beautiful resort, it's taken 10 years now, is now open. The developer-owner has told us that it is 900 employees. Now, that's not all at the same time, I would imagine, but you also have patrons of the five restaurants, patrons of the hotels, patrons of the convention center, as well as residents there that have restricted parking as well. So the residents here have asked for an extension for three years of four hours, and it's my opinion, and I think the rest, a lot on the council here with sponsors, agree with that, and we'd like to move forward.
Anyone else? Okay, the vote is open.
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the resolution.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next order of business is an ordinance to authorize the city manager execute an agreement with the Virginia Beach School Board, ray use of school buses during something in the water, and appropriate 350,000 in estimated reimbursements.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is James Moore.
Something in the water, which many of us have been fighting for years. It's all these new names. There are billionaires, billionaires that you're subsidizing. Air school safety comes first, the safety of the entire city comes first, and as far as using the school buses, that's outrageous. They run down, then you use them and smash them at the monster truck shows. This is one tacky beach. Yeah, I remember in 2019, when the school board, they didn't even know about it, and, you know, they went along with it anyway. This is not what air school buses are to be used for, it's for education. Seeing people drunk and listening to loud rap music is not education for our kids. It should be to go to and from school safely. As far as the expenses, it's 350 for your surf park, which you're taking more parking for that and building more garages, which don't, they don't help us. This is, this is in North Dakota. This is what 350,000 can buy with private money. It's a presidential library for Teddy Roosevelt, who preserved their parks for us, not for parks which are cement venues. Yeah, you've been trying, you're taking away air parking since 1999 with the past system. Certain people, it's discrimination to have parking for some people and take away air parking, and then the entire city, I think it was like, like I said, almost 200 pages about electric cars. They're dangerous, they blow up, people get killed. They're dangerous, they blow up, people get killed. It's not cost-effective, it helps Dominion Energy. Yeah, but at least in 1999, even though it was 110 degrees, there was shuttles. And the Cavalier Hotel can have shuttles. They overbuilt. They can have shuttles. There's no reason that he can't pay for land and give rights to his employees. It's stupid for us to keep paying for...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is James Moore. James Moore. Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Barbara?
I do hope that it's very plain that this is all going to be paid for by the promoter. And this is just upfront. But in looking at the wording that the buses are to be cleaned and inspected at the conclusion of the festival, I hope that we will add the word sanitized in there, given the situation that's still ongoing with COVID. I hope it's more than just brushing it out. I hope that we're going to make sure these buses are sanitized before they're returned to the school system.
Okay, you're out of order, please. You are out of order.
I have no problem accepting that.
Pardon? That's okay, all right, thank you. That would be in line 24, 23.
The motion to approve includes the word sanitized. Okay? And we have that. Okay, do we have a second on the add-on? Okay.
Second.
All right. No other discussion, the vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance as amended.
Okay, open the planning item, and we have one item. The City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, NYCH LLC. Modification of proffers through a conditional rezoning. Ray, the design and development guidelines at the parcels between 2009 Huedom Way and Tournament Drive and parcel on the southeast corner of Princess Anne Road and Tournament Drive in District 2.
Mayor, we didn't have the applicant or the representative sign up. Not sure who that is. Who's that? Emily, did you want to speak first? Normally, the applicant goes first, or we can just call the speakers? Okay.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, members of council, mayor. We are here to request an update to the design guidelines for what formerly was known as Virginia Beach Biopark. That's now Virginia Beach Innovation Park. That changed in the 2021 CIP budget that was briefed for you in April of 2021. We have been through VBDA and two meetings with the ITA Committee, the Planning Commission as well. But the background was that the Innovation Park was dedicated to the VBDA in 2016 as the Biopark. 150 acres off Princess Anne Road in District 2. The vision kind of set out the wooded area to be preserved and development should be consistent with Princess established design guidelines at that time. A lot of these visions still remain. What has changed is that the bioecon system in Virginia Beach really needed to boost first, and hence the bioaccelerator that's occurring on Bendix Road. So the market conditions really changed between when this was adopted and the market conditions we see today. And the density of the park has also changed with the updated stormwater regulations in 2020 and the need for larger bio-retention facilities that have caused a different change in density than was originally envisioned. So we really need to update the design guidelines to help address what we see coming in to still maintain the aesthetic qualities that the park was always envisioned to contain. So we really need guidance for larger format buildings to make sure that any kind of larger buildings or industrial facilities still look as high quality as possible. Additional things like fencing need addressed and really help with developers to know what the standards are when they're coming into the park and help staff review against those design guidelines. There's still additional requirements above and beyond the landscape and zoning warrants for plantings, buffering, building, lighting. We looked hard at existing advanced manufacturing facilities around the country that are well-designed with multiple variations of facade to break up the big footprint, colors, materials, and tried to provide examples in there so it was clear for industrial facilities specifically coming into the park what the bar was. Tried to find just a general streamlined document encouraging outdoors, whether it is outdoor storage that is screened and fenced year-round, paying attention to the front facades of buildings that the publics are going to view, especially from that view for Princess Anne Road. And then I believe, lastly, there was a parking structure section in the original document. We don't think parking structure will ever really be needed in the Biopark, so that has been eliminated from there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is David Cooper.
It would be helpful, Mr. Dyer, if you would say the number and not just read off... Yeah, the Economic Development Authority/City of Virginia Beach Development Authority and YCH LLC modification. And the prior speaker who is with the Development Authority, 2009 Huedom Way, is that named after Rob Huedom? Anyway, Tournament Drive, you rename everything. There's nothing historic left about the city. There's a conflict, a major conflict, with Taylor Adams, who's being paid $200,000 plus travel, and Ms. Murphy, who works for Wilcox Savage. I mean, there's so many conflicts, it's unbelievable. District 2, formerly District 7, Princess Anne, Henley. It's so convoluted, everything you do. But everything affects travel and safety. Yeah. And for air mayor to be going around to other cities and talking about public safety after decades of not doing anything to keep us safe, reckless driving, and some, we're limited on the number of police.
Please stick to the topic at hand.
You can't read my mind, I know what I'm talking about. It's not your job to read my mind and be rude to me.
That would be a challenge. I apologize for that, Ms. Messner.
I apologize for having all of you on council.
Okay.
The next speaker is David Cooper. After Mr. Cooper is Lisa Hartman.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is David Cooper. I am representing Christopher Farms Neighborhood, which is across the street essentially from the proposed project. I am a retired Navy SEAL. Currently, I'm, I guess technically, a social scientist, although I practice on humans and organizations, not in labs. My lovely wife is the vice president and chief nursing officer up here at Centerra Princess Anne Hospital. As I said, I am speaking on behalf of the Christopher Farms Neighborhood. We do appreciate what you're trying to do with the land and put it to good use. We have heard, you know, as one of the arguments, that we, because the land is scarce, that we put it to good use. We do agree with that. I would only suggest, though, that if it is indeed scarce, scarcity usually comes at a premium. I think our marketing and salespeople know this, which is why they, you know, they try to make things appear scarce, right? There's only one left, it's going quick, buy it now, kind of thing. So scarcity is a form of influence. And if that is indeed the case, and if it is indeed the case that the land is scarce, then we would or suggest that we do the same. We market it as such to attract the higher-end businesses and businesses that might truly fit the name of Innovative. It's part of the reason why we supported the Biotech Park to begin with. We saw it as a win-win for all of us. We're not really getting that same feeling right now. And perhaps because the new plans are a little bit more vague than the original plans were. With that, we also supported the original proposal, supported in that proposal a campus-like design. And however one defines that, I think we can all agree that at least we and Christopher Farms would prefer the aesthetic appeal over an industrial or light industrial park that might be a park in name only. So, you know, in closing, I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, if we were to market it to higher-end businesses, I understand some things might need a boost, but to go out there and actually market it to the higher-end businesses, those businesses also come with commensurate, higher-paying jobs. And whatever you decide, we respect that. I would suggest, though, that we stick to that original plan. I own a business, I sold a business a couple of years ago, I know how they work. We cut costs. But we also adhere to standards, particularly those standards that are already known or promulgated. Previously, the standards were in keeping with a suburban-like office campus. We are good with that, we were good with that. It's a win-win for all parties, and I propose we stick to that. And if we were to change the standards, we raise them, don't lower them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lisa Hartman. Lisa Hartman, thank you. And then after Ms. Hartman is Cherie Bach.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and city council. I am here today as a chairperson and representative of the Appointed Transition Area/Inter-Facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee. This proposal was brought to our committee. However, it was not until this past Thursday that we actually saw the redlined what was the original guidelines versus this guidelines. We had to call an emergency meeting to be able to see those. The proposed design and guideline changes do not reflect the original intention of the property. The initial biomedical park goals may have been lofty and ideas not properly vetted, but now the intention to build higher-quality structures is being abandoned. The comprehensive plan and adopted documents, such as the Princess Anne Corridor Study and the ITA Study, reflect the desire to protect the view shed of motorists going to the municipal center. While biomedical may now not be an option, the goals should remain the same. The building that has already gone into the area is not as intended. The bar was higher in the previous guidelines, yet now we see the metal building operating as light manufacturing that does not even meet the standard that is before you today. So my concern is, if this was our standard and this is where we are, this is kind of where we are in the middle. The definition of what can go into this property needs to be clarified. It was rezoned as light industrial to accommodate the biomedical park, so a wide range of uses can bring additional buildings that change the original intent and clearly will negatively impact the view shed. Intended uses were more clearly defined with the biomedical park, and to protect the integrity, the same should be done here. Changing the name from biomedical park to innovation park seems disingenuous and needs a clear direction of uses and designs. There is a level of honesty and integrity we must continue to exhibit to gain the community's trust. In summary, this plan fails to preserve the integrity of the remaining parcels or define the intent of this site, which opens the parcels up to yet more of what is not intended. In addition, the plan decreases density due to soil types and stormwater guidelines instead of considering the ITA Study that looked at the land, its capabilities, and the cumulative effect on the development of development. This plan needs clear clarification or needs clear identification of intent to be more transparent. It is the antithesis of planning to change design guidelines without clearly defining the use of space. Please consider declining to adopt the proposed guidelines and tasking planning and the Development Authority to determine the intent and better recognize the opportunities to protect the integrity of the space and protect the transparency to the citizens of Virginia Beach. I just want to point something out. So if this was where our standards were and this is what we got, and this is now where our standards are going to be, but we don't want this. What is on the front page of your packet is this. So if this is not the intent, why is it on the front page of all of your packets? It makes no sense to me. Thank you so much for your time.
And the next speaker is Cherie Bach.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Cherie Bach, asking you to vote against changing the design and architectural guidelines on what was Biotech but is now called Innovation Park. I was a Navy wife for 30 years. Yet during that 30-year career, my husband and I chose to live two-thirds of it, over 67%, in this very corner of Virginia Beach, raising our four children here. They all profited from the public school system K through 12, with the exception of one year. Yes, this is relevant. I was highly impressed with the energy invested in my children's education and proud to say all of them did extremely well. Tertiary educated, one with a master's degree in quantitative research and analysis, one a biomedical engineer, one a nutrition and fitness therapist, one finalizing studies to be a network administrator. Yet, not one of the graduates returned to the South Side, nor did many of their friends. The best and brightest of the graduates of Kellum High and many other schools have settled in Richmond or beyond because there are no jobs here. My remaining students canvassing for positions cannot find attractive ones in Tidewater. On a business model, I think we can agree this is a terrible return for investment. Simply put, it's brain drain. The proposed Bio-Research Center is a perfect opportunity to begin to correct this issue. With such renowned organizations as Operation Smile and Life Net, both choosing to have their worldwide headquarters in TCC's Regional Health Profession Center adjacent to a hospital and lively medical campus, the area is in a prime location to continue to enhance this medical and educational concentration. Biomedical Industries is one of the fastest-growing and most lucrative enterprises in the world. I hope the Department of Economic Development agrees that this parcel of land is an ideal setting for such a venture as this, and it needs to be protected and marketed appropriately. By doing so, the city would be cultivating high-paying STEM careers to the area, signaling to all, we are looking towards the future. When my kids went to school, the motto was "ahead of the curve." Now, it's "charting the course." City Council, I challenge you tonight. What course will you chart for our city's future? You have an opportunity to create something others use as a model, a corridor of medical and educational excellence leading to the road, the seat of this city's government. An area that is pristine, natural environment with consistent architectural elements pleasing to the eye, attracting companies that will be eager to establish themselves and prosper. A place where our children can come home, put down roots, and chart their own course. Vote to retain the architectural and design guidelines and retain Biotech. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, at this point, do we have a motion? Oh, is it the applicant one? Do you want to come up for rebuttal?
Mayor, no rebuttal, other than I'd maybe like to clarify that you all only pay me one salary. But that said, we support whatever direction council takes with this. We just simply offer that this got a unanimous recommendation from both your Development Authority that's appointed by this body as well as your Planning Commission that you all appoint. However, they are simply appointees, and as you all know, the decision is yours. However, they are simply appointees, and as you all know, the decision is yours to make, and as your staff, we will support wherever you send us. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, Josh, and then Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got one or two questions for Mr. Adams, so if you wouldn't mind, sorry, sorry, sir. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I also have one or two questions for Mr. Adams, after Mr. Schulman.
You got it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, just given the presentation and some of what I've read, it looks like the market for biomed has changed dramatically since this development was originally conceived. And what I'm hearing, I guess, from the neighborhood here is they don't want big box buildings. And what I'm seeing in the guidelines and what I've heard from staff has been an attempt to make something a little bit more, a lot more aesthetically pleasing. I know there is a desire to encourage STEM jobs. What kind of jobs are envisioned to go into this innovation park? Are they engineering, manufacturing, advanced manufacturing? What kind of median salaries might be thinking about?
So Councilmember, thank you for the question. And to go back to the beginning, absolutely what we've heard today is true, that our original vision for this park was, if you were to break up the components of biomedical uses, we had hoped that more of the high-tech ends up to and including pharma might find their way to Virginia Beach. What we've learned in the time since then is generally a research institution that is spinning off technology that can be commercialized in this space is what's required to really establish, really to establish that industry within a community. A great example of that would be the Research Triangle in North Carolina, just south of us. We see that we see the market growing in places where we have that research going on. I mean, Richmond is actually doing fairly well in this around some of the things that are spinning out of the universities there that are conducting research in the space. What we've learned, our original plan would have been to build a lab there that would have been about 15,000 square feet and a 30,000 square foot total building that sat on the corner. That deal when I inherited in 2019 was going to require about a $2.5 million front-end contribution for real estate and some site work, along with the commitment that the public would pay rents in that building for 25 years. The initial rent in that space was over $500,000 a year, and it would grow annually at 3%. So when we looked at the cost that that would bring to the citizen of Virginia Beach, as we were realizing that we were not well-suited to generate an immediate return in those high-tech spaces, we pivoted, and that's where the smaller lab that you saw in the presentation that Ms. Archer made was built. What we have learned about the park is that, one, we could not agree more that this needs to be a place where we're targeting jobs that pay living wages that advance our economy. And so, we think that there is opportunity in advanced manufacturing uses around medical device, medical product, acoustical sheet metal that operates there today, makes an acoustical tile that is used primarily in sound dampening around hospitals. And so, we believe that there is still an appetite and that there's still an opportunity for us to land industrial uses that grow the opportunity for Virginia Beach citizens to have full and robust careers. It just may not be on the tech side in the present. To your point about the attempt here, the attempt here is to take, it's important to know, this land is already zoned for light industrial uses. We anticipate that it would still be used for light industrial uses. But the intent of this action was simply to ensure that we improved the materials to better suit the uses that were coming forward, so that we didn't effectively get sheet metal boxes going forward, so that we got high-quality materials. And you saw in the images that Emily put forward, brick, glass, steel, so that we could give you modern, high-quality structures that also allowed us to induce the manufacturers that would likely create the high-paying to increasing wage jobs, as well as, as many of you know, the apprenticeship and workforce training options that provide those careers without necessarily having to have a college degree. And so, that is what we were trying to accomplish here. That said, I want to go back to this and just say, if we're not there yet, and if this body's not comfortable with the decision, we are happy to go do more work and come back. As your staff, we are not trying to compel you all to a decision that you are not ready to make, and if you need us to do some work to tighten up what we presented to you today, we're happy to do that as well.
Any other questions? Okay, Jen is next, and then Worth, and then Barbara.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Adams, and thank you for that offer, because I would like to take it. Because at the time of getting your packet for this ordinance, it was moved for approval because there was no known opposition to the request. But we have since received opposition to the request, particularly from this very, the name of the committee with lots of As, and I had to write out what even y'all are called, and I, Transportation Something, Something, Traffic Area, you know who you are, the TA-ITA Committee. And they did send a list of questions and concerns that, for me, I would feel more comfortable moving forward with this plan once those questions are addressed. So, before that happens, I'm not comfortable voting to approve this tonight.
Councilmember, we would welcome that. Like you, as I mentioned, this came forward to you in the form it is tonight because there was, you got a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. Certainly, if there is community concern, we'd love an opportunity to work with the community and see if we can address as much of that as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Worth, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Adams. I fully appreciate the intent of this park from the very start of, in this space, as you say, commercial real estate, and the market is what it is, and we can continue to market this innovation park as a biotech park or related industries. That being said, in the field of industrial real estate, right now, I believe our city is, I know of one company that's moved to Norfolk. We've lost some jobs to Norfolk because we don't have space to accommodate, and this is a manufacturer.
Yes, sir.
And so, I would maybe make the comparison to Oceana West Corporate Park, where we have the North American headquarters of Steel, we have German manufacturing, we have potential offshore wind manufacturing, so we have other potential high-end uses. We do have covenants and restrictions for this park, so can you speak to that?
Councilmember, you could not be more right. We are currently running with effectively a 0% vacancy in industrial space in Virginia Beach, and we are at the place where we're looking for any addition of that space that we could, because right now, if you, I've just returned from the Sites Electors Guild, which is the one time a year that people in my business talk with the people on the other side of the table in my business about projects that are coming and what the industry expects from communities. And on the back end of the pandemic, it's important to note that there are places in America that do have vacancy, and given the speed at which we're trying to reshore manufacturing at this point, those projects will follow the path of least resistance, which is to those existing spaces. And our absence of space in the present is a bit of a disadvantage. So we're motivated to create more manufacturing space that we can use to sort of induce, take advantage of this wave of reshoring that we're seeing, and just general projects that are happening in the manufacturing space. And I would tell you that your example regarding Oceana West really is one of our shining stars when you see that Steel's now operating well more than a million square feet there, and we have, give or take, about 16 international manufacturers that already operate in that corridor, and we know that there's capacity for more if we had the space.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, it is my district, and I feel pretty responsible for what goes on there, and I really kind of have to apologize, I guess, to the neighbors because it's not turning out to be what we said it was going to be. And I looked through this whole stack of reports we got about the biomedical, I mean, even up to November 20th of 2018, just shining comments about how wonderful this challenge is and what it's going to bring to us, and then to suddenly in the next year be told, oh, that wasn't right, it's not going to happen, we can't do it there. It's disturbing because I believed what I was told. And as the ITA Committee, and talking about this the other night, and I really respect all of the folks who serve on that committee as volunteers and representatives of the community, it was the thought that we were going to be getting something of a good professional level. And it had been the beginning, I mean, from way back when we acquired the Lakewood property, sort of the idea that maybe that could be an area of research. We looked for villages in this area, an educational village, which we have, a medical village, which we have, and then this sort of worked those together, that we could have biomedical, which would be research in this area, that, yes, it's below the green line, but at the time that we positioned this there, there was supposed to have been the Southeastern Expressway intersection there, so it kind of made sense that, okay, that area could be maybe a bit of a development park, research park. And that's why it had such high standards, and the original designs, of course, were much more complex than we're getting with what's being built there today. And it's just disturbing to make such a massive change and say, whoops, we were wrong, it wasn't what we thought it was, and so we're going to go from here, as Lisa said, down to here. Okay, it's kind of a stretch to say, well, you might use this metal in something at the hospital, to being researching the biomedical part of it. And I look back to the rezoning application when we rezoned this property to I-1, because that's what it had to be to be biomedical. It started out by saying this area is poorly drained soil with a high water table. And anybody who reads our ITA plan, which we spent a lot of good money doing and a lot of time with our residents, throughout, it talks about the restrictions of the land in this area, high-water table, poorly drained soil. And so, to put massive, big boxes in there just doesn't work with the soil as well as with the community. And I've just, I mean, I can appreciate our wanting to bring jobs, but, you know, we sort of did aim for the high professional jobs with that, and, you know, to call it an innovation park, but what's innovative about what we're getting there with this building that we're putting on the front cover? I don't know. I'm really torn. I understand how we've got, well, I almost understand, but I don't. Because I've looked, too, at what we have spent on that, and I believe I sent an earlier email this week, this morning, to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Duhany. In looking back at the CIP projects, we spent 3-point-some-million on a 1,200-foot road into this park as Phase 1, which was completed in 2019, I believe, didn't show up in the next CIP, but then we started with this Phase 2, which is also 1,200 feet into this park with another $6 million. And now, our current CIP has 1,500 feet into the same area, which I think is part of the same 1,200 feet, that needs another $12 million of roadway and so forth. So it's getting to be pretty expensive. That's up to over $20 million just to access this area. I'm really kind of concerned. So I have a lot of questions. I really appreciate the situation we're in, but I don't know that we've got it figured out right yet. I know that we do want the stricter design guidelines, which this gives us some more basis than what we've got right now. I don't know how we got what we've got being built right now without having the design guidelines changed, but anyway, it is. So I'm not sure just what the right thing is to do. If you say that it's all right, that we could have a, I just worry that we have presented one thing to the community and the public, and we're doing something else without going back to the public and talking about it. I mean, when we do extensive plans like this, and we're getting ready to start our comprehensive plan again, how in the world are people going to have any confidence in our comprehensive plan if we just one day say, whoops, we're going to change and do something entirely different? That doesn't work with the public. It's the trust that we have to have, and if we don't have the trust with our public, we haven't got anything. And it just really bothers me, I mean, and I looked, when the ITA Committee was talking about it the other night, looking at this area, we've really got two entrances. We've got this Houdon Way, which is where we're putting $20 million in that park, but then there's a section where it's wetlands, and so that road is not going to be continued, but another road's going to come in at Tournament Drive, and there are only two, I think, parcels in that part of the park to develop, and they're pretty small. If it were known that those were going to be marketed with the original intent, maybe not biomedical, but certainly innovative research, that might be a little easier to swallow. So I'm not sure that there's not some room that we can have that would work with what you need, and I fully appreciate, and I fully appreciate the part that the day when we gave this property to the Development Authority, it means they own it, and it's up to them what goes there. And so, if you want to suggest some action, I would appreciate it, because as you can probably tell, I've really wrestled with this whole thing.
Yes, ma'am. So, Ms. Henley, thank you for that, and I'll go back to what I said to Councilmember Rouse. We brought this forward, it came to this point because we had not faced any opposition, basically, until, I think it was this week or at the very end of last week. And so, it is never our intention to bring something before this body that we know carries objection from the public without having an opportunity to fully discuss that. And so, I do want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the residents of the Christopher Farms Neighborhood, as well as all others that are here that have voiced their concerns, and we would welcome an opportunity, as well as with your ITA or with the ITA Committee, to have a dialogue and see if we can find a road forward. Regarding the questions you sent us this morning, Emily is working on a response to those. I'll tell you, broadly speaking, the increases are attributable to inflation, and Phase 1 of the park was built under our prior stormwater standard. Obviously, with Phase 2, we're requiring that it's, we only design to your current standard, and so there are some increases in cost in delivering the current stormwater standard, but we're committed to that, and that's what that increase was. We'll get you the rest of that written up. But if this body were willing to give us a deferral, I would say of 60 days to do a little work with the neighborhood, we'd love to see if we could have a conversation to put something together and come back to you with something that was perhaps more agreeable to the community.
I think these are very reasonable people, and they can understand, and we'll work on it. So then I will move that we defer 60 days, and if that needs to be a date certain, if someone can tell us what that date is. Second.
I second that.
The second of what, June?
No, that was the second of the motion.
Oh, okay. Pardon me.
It was a very long day today, Ms.
We've been here since noon, folks. Please pardon us.
Ms. Henley, if I may, I know that you all are bogged down with the budget process through the end of May, and I know you want to catch your breath on the back end of that. So what say we bring this to you, I would say, late June, early July, something like that?
You're going to add the 4th of July. What about June 6?
June 6 is 60 days.
Patrick?
Mayor, we could just do it indefinite. We could work with the community at the pace and then bring it back to Council without actually having a defined date. So let's just do an indefinite deferral. If we need to bring it back, we bring it back.
Yeah, we'll have it as quickly as possible.
Ms. Henley, would you defer to update the motion to indefinite?
I will, no, not indefinite. I will defer it to the council meeting near 60 days. That allows us the opportunity to meet with the community.
June 6.
That'll be June 6.
Second. Looks like June 6, maybe.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Thank you very much.
Okay, to vote? Okay, the vote's open. Motion to defer.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this item has been deferred until June 6.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you all very much.
And I thank you, too.
Okay. Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, do you have appointments today?
So, I move to, for the Community Organization Grant.
Vice Mayor, thank you.
Sorry, I thought it was on. I move to, for the Community Organization Grant, which is COG Committee, to appoint Michaela Hume, the Community Policy and Management Team, to appoint Jenny Hodge, the Community Services Board, to reappoint Brianna Dempsey, the Health Services Advisory Board, to appoint Dominique Hawkins and Teresa Shiflett, the Minority Business Council, to reappoint Ed Hopper, Akita Jovia, Kritia Laftas, and Olga Torres, the Planning Commission to appoint Michael Anderson for District 3, the Senior Services Southeastern Virginia to reappoint Catherine McVeigh, Stormwater Appeals Board to appoint Mark Johnson, the Virginia Beach Towing Advisory Board to reappoint Jack Drescher.
Okay, that's it? Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we are adjourned and going to open dialogue.